Of order. You know, public safety license to order.
Make motion that we dispense with the reading of previous minutes and approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Alright.
Motion passes. Second, sorry. Before his petitions for 2025 renewal of second class motor vehicle licenses, without objection, I'll take them all together. Mari Sabah DBA Montpelot, okay, 317 Montpelot Ave. ENC Auto Brokers LLC, 7 Harrison Ave. McSheffery's SC LLC doing business as McSheffery's consultant on 75 Main Street. And Cambridge Auto Service Incorporated doing businesses, Woburn Plaza Shell, 293 Main Street. All paperwork's in order. No complaints, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we sent them out to pass with the condition that all paperwork be in order by the next full city council meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Alright.
Motion passes. Last item on the agenda is petition for a new second class motor vehicle sales license for Alex Auto and Repair at 505 Main Street. As you may remember, this was the situation, it was the discussion.
Have a seat, Alex.
Is there a seat?
Yeah, there's one right next to John.
So just a point of reference, if I may, Mr. Chair. Alex operates the current Express Fuel and Alex's Autobody or Auto Shop. And this was the situation we had where stipulations were supposedly made during the sale of the property that there would be a secondhand dealer's license. But the secondhand dealer's license was in somebody's name other than the seller of the property to Alex. He's a good businessman. He's done a lot to clean up the site. So I would, I would think it would be fair that he would be able to maintain the secondhand dealer's license there. I will say this, though, Alex. I go, we did have problems in the past. So if we're, if we're gonna be having this secondhand dealer's license there, you need to adhere to the rules and the permit. Are you, you're willing to do that?
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, and I don't know if you had anything else to add tonight, but I know what we've talked about.
I really appreciate it.
Let me just look for the number of cars. Alex, what's the number of cars that's on the permit?
Before it was five, and that's gone, so it's going to be new. But, uh, the parking lot can park, won't embark until forty cars, but anything I can get, it is work for me, then I start from one.
Okay. Based on the previous work that was done there and the issues that we had, I'd be comfortable starting with ten. Is that okay? Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we send it out to pass with the restriction of ten vehicles.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion says. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Alright, Consul Viola, I'll call the Committee on Finance to order. With me on the committee is Consul Campbell, who's absent, Consul DeMurs, Consul Ferrulo, and Consul Mercer Bruin.
I think a motion is dispensed with the reading of previous minutes and approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Only item on our agenda is an order that $30,000 to transfer from U-Haul Olympia Ave account to Pine Street Crossing Lights account.
Thank you. I wanted to first of all thank Mayor Concanon for sending down this order. You, you all know that's how the mitigation accounts work. We have to approve it, but the order has to come from Mayor Concanon. I spoke with him about this several months ago. This was something the Traffic Commission approved, gosh, maybe a year and a half ago now. At the corner of Pine and Orange Streets, several years ago, somebody was hit. Fortunately, it wasn't, you know, there was no fatalities, thank goodness. This is a walking area to school, as everybody knows. Pine Street is a very busy street, so I'm hoping we'll get support tonight from the council to move forward this. And again, I thank Mayor Concanon, who's here tonight, for sending this down.
Mayor Concanon, do you have anything to add?
No, well stated.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion that the order for $30,000 be transferred from the U-Haul Olympia Ave account to the Pine Street Crossing Lights account.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.
I'm not.
I was purposely wanting to make your committee run a little longer.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Next up on our order of committees is Committee on Ordinance, Charter, and Rules. I'll entertain a motion to read and waive the reading of the previous meeting minutes and approve.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is ordinance. Sorry, I gave you personnel.
You can leave personnel right there. Thank you. Okay, on our agenda this evening is an order from the mayor amending Woburn Municipal Code, Section 2-80, base salaries for the Public Works Facilities Manager. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the committee, and the council. As stated, what's in front of you tonight is a particular request that we amend Section 2-180, which covers the base pay of these particular city employees. This one is the Public Works Facilities Manager, previously approved, previously budgeted. This is in our budget. This position has not been filled. For the purposes of tonight's meeting, I'd like to talk about this position in terms of the, the increase. I know that there's the longer term discussion also in committee about building feasibility position. But I remind you that this one that we're talking about currently does exist, it just simply wasn't filled. We have the superintendent here and the HR director, who would likely tell you that the reason it wasn't filled is that the salary is incredibly low. And it's not within, it's not even within the salary structure in DPW. We believe, after looking at neighboring communities, that there are two ways to go with this issue. One would be a department on its own, again, the other matter that's pending, or put it within DPW and pay this position adequately, have it report up through the chain of command in the DPW. And at a minimum, at that point, we would get a better handle on our facilities across the board, what we need, what we have. So what we're asking for tonight is really that you take a look at this current, previously approved position, currently sitting at $80,000, and consider whether the $115,000 is reasonable. Sean can tell you that we've done some comps, and this is at the very, very far low end of any comp we've seen for a position like this. When I mentioned to each of these department heads that this was the topic, to try to advance the cause of having somebody oversee all buildings in the city, you can see how much interest there was from each of our department heads who are responsible right now for the building. We've got the police chief, the fire chief, the senior center director, we've got the recreation director, and then the DPW as well. These are all people who are currently dealing with all of these various building and facilities issues. And they, to a person, have told me they need help. They're asking that we advance this so we can get a person into this position and start to get a better, better handle on facilities within the city. I appreciate easier than coming out tonight. If there are any particular questions you have of any of them, how they manage right now, how much they desperately need this position, they're certainly available to answer those questions. And Sean is also available to get questions about the comps. But again, we're really just looking to be able to advance filling this position, get somebody on the team who can get their arms around this problem. We think that the 115 that's being requested is more than reasonable, and I would respectfully be.
When we get into the committee, is there a motion to open it up to all members?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consul, Mr. Bruin, then to her.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I take no exception to the, the salary. It's probably long overdue, like everybody here knows. And I will support the salary tonight, but I just want to make sure you understand that when we get into the other discussion about how it's put together, I have some additional thoughts on that. And really, we just need to understand, for, for my benefit, so I can explain it to my constituency, exactly what this person will do, however the reporting structure is, right, and how they will be measured. Those are the, the two top things that I will need to understand, but you have my full support tonight.
Thank you.
Consul. Thank you. Mike, is, I know, this might be a little premature. Would this facilities manager sit below Jay and Rennie? Is that how the structure would work? Jay, Rennie?
That's currently how the ordinance is written, that's how the position was approved, so yes.
And then this person would be, would take control of kind of the city buildings that we have and oversee them to help out with the chiefs and the department heads, things like that. Who's, who's doing it right now? No one's really doing it right now, but who is, who's doing the bare minimum right now?
So it's a combination of the two of us, generally speaking, and our staff. But let me give you, so you want, everybody in here understands what we're talking about. I guess I'll ask the question. How many buildings do you think we're talking about?
Does include the schools? Are we including the schools or not including the schools? Twenty-one.
Fifty.
Well, put a list here. You've been surrounded. We're talking about fifty?
I'll make most of it up as soon as I can.
It's all, you know, there's different.
There's different, there's different, all different kind of variations, instructions. But basically, we've got almost fifty sports. We've got a utility, you know, water, sewer, electricity, and a roof. We gotta deal with it, and we gotta deal with it, and if we don't deal with it, you know, elevators, things like that, you know, in Marlow Park, there's, we take a look at that list, it's all across the city. And, and we do our best, we do our best with our staff, but honestly, that position will be, will pay for itself within a month. If not so, we, as an example, Chief, Kent will attest, we, him and I have had some go around back and forth, we're doing our best to help this new building. $10,000 last week, last week, we spent. Ten thousand. That's ten thousand. So I'm telling you, with us on it, with this person on it, to assist us, that person will pay for itself in a month, guaranteed.
Okay.
Yeah, I supported it, I supported it last time, we had the conversation. I think we need somebody to run or manage the, the city buildings. We have the new fire, fire headquarters, we've got the two fire stations that we're building, we got the PFAS water treatment facility, talking about new schools, and then all these other buildings, some of them I have no idea that you guys manage. So I supported it then, I support it now, you have my support too.
Thank you.
Consul DeMurs.
I support this position, because I'm a staunch believer in preventative maintenance. And I think that's what we need. At fifty buildings, you know, we can't expect you guys to do infrastructure and, and all the different things that you guys gotta do and plows and run, you know, thirty guys on the DPW. We can't expect our fire chief and our police chief to be chasing air filters and, you know, urinals that aren't shutting off, and toilets that keep running, or floods, or this and that, leaks in the roof. Their job is public safety. You know, and I don't understand how, we can't have a position like this, so somebody would be against a position like this, especially when there's fifty entities here we have to monitor and, and maintain on a daily basis, and we have to keep an eye on them almost around the clock, so that we can keep our, our city running. So I'm a believer in this, and I understand, you know, there was a salary increase, I understand that, you know, it's in the budget of eighty thousand, and I know it's an uptick of approximately thirty-five thousand. But when you have somebody bird dogging these facilities and these buildings, because I was in facilities, that helps maintain. Because if it's overlooked or it's let go for longer periods of time, costs money, much more money on the back end. So I support this, and I believe there is a cost savings, and I believe this will pay for itself, almost instantaneously, providing we put somebody in there, put the qualifications needed, that can do the job and do it well. So I'm gonna support this, thank you.
Consul Papalatto?
Just two really quick questions. So the, the ask here is for thirty-five K?
Increase this salary from eighty to one-fifty?
It's not connected to the school job that we've talked about now?
No.
Just that this request is thirty-five?
Basically, to fill the position that everyone wanted.
Yep.
With, I'll take second, with the DUC.
I'm, I'm gonna stand here.
Consul Viola?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor, who's the appointing authority for the, this position?
DPW is the one.
Okay. And like everybody else has said, I do believe this is a position that's badly needed in the city. The buildings do need to be watched over daily, shouldn't be up to our department that's to do it, or the DPW as well. Should have that single person or persons within the, the facilities management department that should do it, so I am in support of this.
Thank you.
Consul Mercer Bruin?
Thank you, just for clarification, so, because somebody is going to ask me this question outside of this room, what are the fifty buildings? So it's not buildings, it's, it's fifty different things, including fifty locations that, that require attention and...
I think I clarified on the, on the show.
Yeah, but, but the only reason I say that, Jay, is because the cameras are rolling, right? So people at home are gonna say, what, what are fifty buildings? So it's fifty locations that clearly need attention, so.
Twenty plus.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-one. One of which we might just get rid of, but it's still ours right now, as of today, so.
There's more than twenty-one, I mean, you have the, you know, the water treatment plant, like I separated those, you started water and sewer, but you know, there's three buildings down there, plus we get the PFAS building coming.
Oh, there's no doubt, I just, again, I want to be clear, so when someone asks me, what are the fifty buildings? It's different locations, it's a lot, right? That's all we really have to say. It's a lot for, for how we're trying to do it today, so.
We've actually, I, I started making that list.
And there might be more that you're not aware of, but yeah, so.
But salt, the salt ship, it's not on there, there's heavy chilis, but it's a, we have to most likely, probably in the capital plan, coming up.
Well, I think you probably heard from everyone that, what, what the answer is tonight, for sure, I, I hope.
Consul John?
Just one question for Sean. Sean, are we comfortable with the research we've done, or you've done, or the team has done, that the, the bump from eighty to one-fifteen is sufficient enough to get someone qualified for the position?
Yeah, I mean, I think when we were originally talking about the other topic of about the schools, the one team wouldn't get us that. We're always talking about much, much, many more buildings, so had fallen under the structure of being within the DPW, having that reporting structure, not being a department head per se, or division within essentially DPW, it should get us, the public, all, I think, it could be able to support that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, just from the chair, I think this is a solid first step in compromise away from that building feasibility manager that we were contemplating, and I think, you know, that may be more appropriately discussed during budget, just to get a better handle on it. But I, I would echo the sentiments of Consul Mercer Bruin in, you know, providing us with this data was great tonight, because it shows us, we can, we then become capable to go out there and, and sell this to the public when we're spending their tax dollars. I think having a more outlined structure for the other idea that we've had, to do an overarching building feasibility manager, I think we need to have that much more flushed out.
And as you know.
Responsibilities, expectations, measurement tools, and so forth, so that we can get support for it.
And what I mentioned in the state of city address was the grant we received, with Collins Center will help us assess that bigger picture, and we'll go.
Was the will of the committee?
Make a motion that the order be approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Their motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Marie, can I have a minute? She left a lot going on this year.
Yeah.
I didn't post it on the, you can have to come back and check it, it's a solid, there. She didn't seem all that fired up.
I included this, if you could scan that and get that to the member.
Do you have a copy, oh, you have a copy of that?
Yep.
Oh, you, what was provided?
Alright, next item on our agenda is Committee on Personnel. I'm standing in for Consul Campbell as the acting chair from my chair. I'd like to wish her speedy recovery, as she is in recovery at home from a recent procedure. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading and approve the previous meeting's minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor? Alright, next on the agenda is an order that the city council fill the vacancy in the position of city engineer, interview with Alexander Rozicki. But first, I'd like HR Director Shawna Haley to come out and distribute a package of questions that were prepared for the council.
Yeah, so it's approbation for Alex and questions of the.
We're in committee as a whole, I'm sorry. We're moving in the committee as a whole.
The job is fifteen dollars.
Thank you.
You need one more?
Ah, yeah.
Whenever you get one.
Great, I'm not gonna pass it.
Unbelievable. It wasn't.
No, no, it's okay, I'm gonna need a Snickers after dealing with you today. Alright, come on up, Alex.
Here. Yep, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. So I think what we can do, as we're meeting in a committee as a whole, to my fellow members, is I'll start here, we'll go that way, and then we'll loop back to Consul Viola and come this way, and just go through the questions, and I'll take whatever's left over. So Alex, welcome.
Thanks.
Please tell us about yourself, describe your work experience and how it has prepared you for the city engineer position in the city of Woburn. But as to why, why you applied for the position, please describe your most recent, most recent job duties and how they would relate to the city engineer. And I'll do a follow-up, there's another section, a long question. Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Thanks to the committee, Mr. Mayor, Shawna, for having me tonight, maybe on short notice, to get things kicked off here in your interview process. Right now, my name's Alex Rozicki, I'm the Assistant Town Engineer in the town of Reading, just nearby. I started there seven years ago, before that, I was doing private consulting with CDM Smith, who actually obviously does a lot of work in town still. Worked with people who are designing and implementing your PFAS treatment down on Horn Pond there. So I did seven years private consulting. At the time, it felt like a good lifestyle change to get into municipal engineering. Since then, I went from senior civil engineer, they created a new position of Assistant Town Engineer for me, I think, and I believe because of the results that we achieved in the engineering department there. And, I mean, more or less, it's the same in the city of Woburn as it is in the city, the town of Reading, you know, things come up, infrastructure, utility updates, traffic, from the whole game of engineering, basically. It's a very similar role as to what we're applying for, and I, I think, you know, it's just the next step to be, um, city engineer as opposed to assistant in a neighboring town that I work in now and I live in Stonem, so it's, it's felt like a good thing.
Please note one or two major accomplishments you achieved in your most recent position.
Yeah, I think I've been part of a good team in town here, it was great. We, in the town of Reading, a, a specific highlight for me is the Mullet Subs Morgan constructed stormwater well, and that, that park that we, I started that project about six years ago on a site visit with a gentleman, and he had the vision for creating these stormwater constructed welllands that would take flow from the Aboriginal River, which runs through Woburn, hold it in these sort of constructed detention ponds that are natural and beautiful with these walking trails. And I saw it for five years, and, and by the end of the fifth year, we, we earned the single largest MVP grant through the city of Massachusetts at the time, $2.1 million. And then we asked for a million and a half on a federal earmark, and they actually gave us two because they supported the project, so. So that's not just me, that's planning, engineering, DPW, the town manager, but I, I saw that project from the first sidewalk to the ribbon cutting, and that was very rewarding.
Alex, welcome. As you know, Woburn's pretty, pretty diverse, we got a lot going on in the city. So my question to you is, what do you know about the city of Woburn and its engineering department and its operations?
Yeah, I mean, I, I live in Stonem, I've, I've worked in Reading. I, I kind of deal with Woburn residents a little now, because you probably all know that there's traffic light west, south, and.
Yep.
So I, we get, everyone comes off the highway in Woburn, and they're trying to cut through Reading either to ninety-five or ninety-three, or, or get around the pull relief somewhere, so I, I know Woburn residents don't like the timing of the traffic signal at South and West Street, and I can tell you that we'll, we'll try to fix it, but it's just not in place right now. You know, I live ten, fifteen minutes away, so I'm familiar with the, the demographics in the city as a whole. I've worked with Jay Corey on various projects for five, seven years now on Reading, and I've worked with Matt Barrett in GIS on the same Mystic River watershed, you know, we're in these regional collaborations, and I see them probably quarterly, if not more.
Excellent, excellent. And, and you know, it's interesting that you bring up the water retention, but a groundwater and all that stuff, the drainage and stuff, we're, we're kind of running into some issues with that now, so I, I would definitely be interested in picking your brain on, on some of that.
Yeah, I, I think the Pearl Park School was in the same MVP that the Mullet Subs Morgan project, that, they both started at design the same time. Reading had a leg up and a year had started on process, so we finished, and it sounds like Pearl Park is, is made for a school park, but I don't know what you guys are calling it today, but it sounds like that's a year or two behind, so that, I, I kept in touch on that one, for sure.
Excellent, thank you.
Consul Mercer Bruin for number three?
So thank you for mentioning the light. As soon as I saw your name, Alex, I recognized it, and I appreciate what you and the town of Reading have, and I know that the bigger picture, there's some cost issues there, but there were changes made that absolutely alleviated things, and I thank you for that.
No, thanks.
For now, no. You know, sometimes it's just about volume, right? When we have situations that happen that we can't control, there's only so many places for the cars to go, and if they don't go up, that, you know, we can't, not yet anyway, they don't go up, right? But I, I thank you for that, and I also wanted to let the, the council know, you've come very highly recommended from, from, from someone who I have a great deal of respect for and I worked with for eighteen years, which is Jay Corey. So I'm glad to see you sitting in that seat, talking with us tonight. And, you know, when, when Consul DeMurs asked you about one of the most difficult things that you handled, if I were you, I would have said the light at West Street, because I know, I know that you guys were getting those calls, not just me. So again, thank you very much, I think we'd be very, very lucky to have you.
Yeah, and just to follow one that, you know, the timing is in a place like with a mayor, you could kind of find more money, in a place like Reading, I have to go to town meeting, appropriate, and the control is broken and all that stuff.
So what you did was, what you did was deficient for now, and I know you guys are working on it, but, and it, it's, so you never want to say that to a city council in Woburn, it's just timing. You know how many times you've heard that from petitioners, all we have to do is fix the timing, and you'll be able to manage all of this, you know, so just a little hint from the future.
Should be a smart intersection that can key, and, and it needs necessary.
Yeah, but anyway, I appreciate everything you've done for our city, and I hope that we get to rely on you as our city engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I read through your resume very impressive, and I'm highly recommended, which is fantastic. One question is, you're coming in a lesser role, you're an assistant at, at this point, right? And you're talking about a town to a city?
Yep.
Is that, do you have any concerns around that? I mean, your resume reads that you're gonna be able to handle all this, but is there any concern you have that, that the volume of the stuff is gonna get thrown at you, because you got on the stairs, you spent any time there? It's a crazy office down there, there's a lot going on there, and maybe Reading has the exact same situation, I don't know, but that's the only thing we jumped out of.
Yeah, I think Woburn's a, a bigger city than Reading is a town, but I don't, the populations aren't too, too drastic, and I think a lot of the time, the, the town engineer, city engineer, whatever you want to call it, they have a lot of consultants that they work with, and those consultants are kind of who you're, are leaning on and, and providing more of the long, not long-term planning, but long-term design work, and you're sort of the face for the public to say what needs to get done, and what has to get done, and what's an issue today. So I, I think the, the volume of calls and complaints probably may be higher day-to-day basis, but I think the budget for the, the position, not salary-wise, but the budget and capital expenses for outside help and, and people to help your team succeed probably matches the expectation of, you know, the residents.
Yeah, and I know we all work very closely with you today, today, and we would do the same with you in the future, so.
Yeah, I would just say also, the, the committee is very efficient with the, the eyes and the moving, and you guys work at warp speed compared to some other departments these other departments that I've worked with.
Take it easy, you might have to go back then.
Yeah, they say it.
Alex, what are skills that are essential to being a good city engineer?
Being able to, to listen, being able to recognize what people are dealing with, and, and translate it into a workable solution, given budget, time, means. I, I think there, people could drive around and say, "Wouldn't it be great if this was like that, or that was like that, and we love this here," but managing sort of what has to happen, and, and what can happen, and what would be sort of a goal, and what would be nice to have.
Number five, Council Viola.
And sort of just to understand, there's very complex issues, and also to know when to ask someone for help, and, and when to say, "I couldn't design your PFAS treatment, but I can have someone tell me why they're designing your PFAS treatment," and then translate that to you all or to your residents.
Great. Council Viola?
Alex, I want to thank you for applying. My question to you is, can you describe some projects that you have worked on that are similar to projects that Woburn has on the works?
Yeah, and I think the two, obviously, is the, the green infrastructure, you guys are, is Shaker Glen and, and Pearl Park. You know, those are obviously very similar to Mullet, you know, I'm sure that Woburn's paving roads, I imagine that falls under engineering, maybe it's more of a DPW thing here, it's probably a little bit of both on, on who does the bigger ones and the local roads. Infrastructure, but, you know, I'm sure, you know, I really got started with CDM Smith in stormwater, so, a, and you could tell by what I'm keep referencing, that stormwater really was a passion for me, that translated into sewer lining, sewers, CIPP lining, underdrain removal of sewers. I've, I have a background in environmental engineering undergrad, so, along with, I mentioned PFAS, but I oversaw the, this construction of a landfill early in my career, that helped me deal with sort of soil backgrounds. In, in another town I work in currently, we've hit an unlucky streak of finding a lot of hazardous material underground, and I think that's the nature of the urban area we live in, so. That's a big unknown on projects that you really have no idea what you're going to dig out of the ground until you start digging, and, and managing how that could become a, a really runaway cost, a, and using the LSP to, to translate and, and make those decisions, I, I think would translate well to Woburn.
Thank you. Alex, this position requires significant interaction with the public, contractors, vendors, city council, and city boards. Describe your experience making public presentations and interacting with the public. What have been some of your most challenging interactions?
Yeah, so, as, as a town engineer, town meeting in, in Reading is probably a little different, I'm sure you hear from Jay, because he's been here forever. That would mostly be my boss's role. I think I'm pretty comfortable speaking in front of a large group here tonight in public, probably the same. I'd give him presentations, but not to the town or the, the entire council, have you. I, I think the, the tough part is, is probably this job, for, for better or worse, people really only want to call you when they have a complaint. You don't get a lot of calls in the engineering department to say, you know, that catchphrase, "It really looks me today." So, it's, it's a lot of negative feedback, and, and it, it becomes a little not a thankless job, because there's times when you get to open a park and have a ribbon cutting, that it, it's all worth it, but it, the public feedback in, in large is, is pretty negative, and knowing that that's going to be part of it, and you kind of take it and say, "We'll do what we can, and we'll try to help you out best we can," and, and kind of move forward, is probably the most difficult part.
Thank you.
Councilor Furlough?
Alex, what do you like best about your most recent position? And please inform us of your interpersonal professional strengths, and what specific area would you like to improve on?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, part of the reason why I've been there for seven years is that the town engineer is similar to Jay, where he, he's been there for 20, and it's been a great experience learning from him. You know, he's, he's one of the best around, and I'll, I'll go to bat for him anywhere. So that's been tough. I mean, I haven't put my name out there here or anywhere else, really. Part of that reason, and having Fridays off is kind of nice, too. That would be tough, but the one, would you ask one thing I'd, I'd like to.
What would you like to improve on?
Improve on? Uh, yeah, I think more of that, that public-facing, you know, I think you get it in the office, but just sort of being that, that go-to and being more involved in, in the long-term capital planning and looking more, you know, three to five years out than six months to a year on infrastructure projects and things like that. I think that would be a fun change in pace.
Back to the professional strengths, if you had to pick one thing that you do, what's your strongest point on your professional side, and what's the one you don't like doing?
I, I think for an engineer, I'm, I'm pretty well-equipped at, at dealing with the public and speaking in front of the public and translating engineering issues and engineering-related items to the public, and, and keeping that technical background that I have in mind, but really getting down to how is this going to affect your life, or why are we doing this?
What about the other end, what's C you don't like to do?
I don't like working on Fridays.
You'd love to sign off on that.
No, I, yeah, I it would, I, I guess that'll go back, it, it's kind of, it's, not that I don't like doing it, but just constantly kind of having people tell you why you're not doing the right thing, or, or being saying that you're not doing your job, or you don't care about this, a, and, and making it kind of personal when we're, we're here to provide services to the residents, really, at its most basic function, and, and people, I think, don't really understand that, and, and it sometimes becomes personal. That's not to say that, that's something that I don't like doing, but I think that's part of the job that, going from private to public, you, you really sort of get hammered down by residents.
Awesome, thank you very much. Alex, how would you describe your management style, and how would you adapt it to work here? Do you have an open-door policy? What advantages, disadvantages to having an open-door policy, in your opinion?
Yeah, I don't have a door yet, so that'd be a nice upgrade, uh, to have it. You can take the hinges off the door, and we'll make it an open door. No, I, I think it, you know, one of the things that's exciting in this profession is you sort of show up to work every day, and you think you're doing this, but this happens, so you're, you're doing that that day, or someone comes in with something that you really would have never known, or it would have been totally off your radar, and that becomes the thing that engineering's doing that day, so. I think that kind of demonstrates that you need to have an open door, you can't just, if, if you're someone who's going to be too detail-oriented on your schedule and your time, you're going to get tripped up somewhere. I think one thing for me is, you know, as much as I say a joke about Fridays, is like, the hours of, of construction are different than the hours of engineering and town hall, and I think that's something that I would be very, oh, not not so rigid in, in what the day-to-day work hours are, and focusing on, okay, when do we need here, to be here today, where do we need to be? And sort of making sure that you're in the best spot at that time for the city.
What's your experience with budget preparation and defense to a wider audience, like the select board or town meeting?
Uh, more i- in the background, you know, I think I'm aware, and I could give you what items and what stations are coming up, and, well, you know, what pump stations are next in line. But being just assistant town engineer, that's three or four people removed from, you know, demonstrating all the budget, I, I'm aware of what is in the budget. But having to defend that, that warrant article, town meeting is a couple people.
What additional skills do you have that complement your engineering training?
So, just a couple of the boards, I'm looking down. Obviously, a professional engineer, I have a master's in civil engineering, a bachelor's in science in environmental engineering. I volunteered on the Conservation Commission in Stoneham for about five years, I was the chair by the time I left. I had a child about a year and a half ago, so I needed to come back on, on that stuff, and I'm in the, I'm on the executive board for the Brooklyn Mitchell Collaborative, who sort of serves that regional purpose in connecting different communities, and, and that's been a really great professional network to engage with other towns, city engineers, and, and sort of find those funding sources that may be out there to help the city kind of cut costs.
Great. And lastly, if I, if I, how would you approach your first three months of work, priorities or tasks? How would you go about reassessing the needs of the engineering department and implementing any changes that may be needed?
Yeah, I don't know how long the current city engineer is going to be around, but you can't learn enough from someone who's been doing it for as long as he's been doing it, so, you know, that answer probably just depends on what the structure and timeline, that plan is, assuming that there's an overlap, you, you kind of shadow that person as long as you can, you make sure you have all the documents, all the the memos that have been written, and, and the project meetings, and the, through the site visits as much as you can, and just spend as much time as you can, and then you sort of listen to you all and the residents, and figure out what's the immediate needs, and then start digging through the capital plan, and seeing what's coming up, and who's bidding this, and who's designing that, and you start to check in on what the progress is on the various 10, 12 projects that are going on currently.
Right, at this moment, I'll open up to any other questions or comments that any members of the committee may have. Councilor DeMara?
We face, on the city council, I'm sure you're aware of this, there's a lot of projects that come into us from different commercial entities, residential, and we're always relying on our engineering department, and building inspectional services department. So there's also your daily day, you know, day-to-day asks, as you're well aware, I mean, your resume speaks on behalf itself. How are you with, say, you know, time-sensitive type, type issues or, or projects, or? And again, we rely on our department as especially engineering, because we're always having entities come at us saying, "Oh, no, no," or third party, you know, these peer reviews and everything saying, "No, this is the best, this is the best." We rely on our people, which our engineering department is extremely important to all of us. Councilor Mercer, Bruin, and myself, we, we share two of the, the most busiest wards in the city with a lot of commercial and industrial, and we're constantly, you know, ringing engineers' bell. How, how do you handle in situations like that where you're going to have, it's almost like your air traffic control, there's going to be a lot of flights coming in around you?
Yeah, I think that's, one of the things I said earlier, it's, you know, the hour, sure, whatever, 8:30 to 4:30, but I, I think I'm able to prioritize what tasks need to get done, at what time and where to be at, at what time effectively enough to know that, you know, things become, things, like I said, things come up, you never know what you're going to be doing that day, something could break, something, things are old around here. And, and just keeping a healthy schedule and calendar, and being aware of sort of what deadlines are approaching, so that you don't leave something to the last minute in case something does come up. I think, like you said, that, that's one of the bigger things, is, is the commercial, industrial, and Woburn is, is significantly different than a, a lot of the towns really around here. So that would, that would take some sort of grace period, not grace period, but some sort of learning curve to figure out what, who's the third party? Who do we typically use? You know, what are the, not even to get into the bylaws and regulations, obviously, that's, that's in itself, that's probably how you answer the first three months, is is learning what the bylaws and regulations are, so that you can do a third-party review, or start to read some of the reviews that they had done in the past, and know what things to key in on. This, so just to answer the question, is sort of, as quickly as you can, figure out what is a, is a rule or regulation, and, and figure out what, what approaches contractors are taking to try to get through those rules and regulations as, as cost-effectively as they can, just to be on the lookout for things that may come up.
Because we definitely appreciate the cut through the minutia and get us direct to the point.
Yep.
Because when we have to present, we have to have a fact shop.
Yeah, I don't think anyone wants to read a five-page memo on, on, you know, a storage unit. Let's, you know, get down to eight bullet points.
Or lead back to the lawyers.
Yeah.
Alex?
Excellent, thank you.
So, Woburn as a community, we've benefited a lot off of, like, MassDOT and the NPO, a tip. We've had the Marpial Ave widening project, we've got pretty much, what was it at? The percentage of, uh, Midwastus Street is probably how, five, one?
Uh, right now, it's about 50 to 51 percent.
Yeah, and then, we're going to be having a robust discussion and community outreach for a redesign of downtown.
Yeah.
Um, and that kind of went right on the NPO right away, so that, or the tip, I should say. So what, what is your experience with the tip, or your thoughts on, you know, interaction with the NPO to get projects going?
Yeah, so, in, in the seven years that I've been, I don't know if people drive through Reading a lot, um, it went, Main Street in Reading went from, especially the south section, uh, went from a four-lane, two-way, north and south into a one-lane, north and south with a shared turn, center lane, a shared turning lane is what they call it now. So, you know, I, I've worked, they provide the oversight with those kind of projects, obviously, because they're state roads, and the jurisdiction, these state roads and local roads obviously differs, but just having said that, you know, I know, you know, Paul Stedman, Mike, the last names are the seeds, a lot of the inspectors I, I've worked with there, and, and the district heads. And then, you know, that we've, Reading has been successful in leveraging, you know, MassWorks, tips, grants to get the, I think, grants to get the design in one year, and then you, you feed through another source the next year to sort of find the construction money, so I think, just having kind of seen various different uh, called more local roads upgrades, you know, everyone loves pedestrian improvements, bicycle safety, walk, walkability, parking, you know, all those things are, are top of mind for residents right now.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Mercer, Bruin?
To that point, the work that was done in Reading Center, and, and all of the replacements of the, the traffic lights along West Street and up and down 28, which you just referred to, that was a big effort, big effort for the, the town of Reading to work with all of those folks. I lived some of it, so, I thank you for that. I, I heard you when you say sometimes, you know, you get people who call, and sometimes they're upset, right? But just so you know, that happens in, in the public sector, too.
Oh, yeah.
And, and oftentimes, they're not upset with you.
They don't, yeah, they don't.
They're not upset with you, maybe something else happened in their day, so, so don't let that get you down, right?
Yep.
Um, and I, I wish you the best, Alex, and I, and I truly hope we get to work together. This is a city council appointment, so you'll be seeing a lot of us if you do come to work here, so, thank you.
All right.
What's the will of the committee?
I'll, I'll make a motion to extend, yeah, excuse me?
Make a motion to recommend him to.
Yes, sir.
There, second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, please.
The motion was to recommend Alex Rosenfield as full city council for vote.
So that will go to a, the next Tuesday for the formal vote of the full city council.
All right.
Katie?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
You, too.
Follows in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trona, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to convene the meeting on special permits. First on the agenda is.
Make a motion to approve.
Edens.
Previous meeting minutes?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And just for a quick review, the members of the committee, including myself, Councilor Campbell is absent, Councilor DeMambro, Councilor Viola, and Councilor DeMars. And I think we have Attorney Vaughn here, and members of Edens. For people at home, it's often times when we say Edens, people don't understand, we're talking about the Woburn, Woburn Village. So I'm going to set the stage just a little bit for people at home. So, approximately a year and a half or so ago, we started talking with the folks at Edens about some of the many times we hear from people that there's not enough parking. It's been demonstrated by several people that we do have enough parking there, but we have a bit of a parking management issue. management issue when it comes to pedestrian access and people knowing where that parking is. Um, and before Mayor Concanon was Mayor Concanon, he was president of the city council, um, and spent a great deal of time talking with Attorney Vaughn and the folks from Edens about this very problem. Um, so I'm glad the mayor's here tonight to see the plans that have come forward, uh, to talk about how we get better access to the parking that's there, uh, and the plans that you folks have put together for us tonight to look at. Um, I do have a, I don't know if, if anybody saw the letter from J. Corey regarding this, um, because I would like to get it read into the record. If you don't have it, I will, if you just bear with me for one minute, I'll pull it up.
It's in the package.
Is it in the package? Do I have a motion to accept J. Corey's?
To accept uh, J. Corey's um, letter, make it out of the record.
Second.
Um, and just.
And there's also a memo from the building commissioner.
As well as.
The one, I didn't see the one from the building commissioner, my apologies.
It's a form of an email.
Oh, it is, okay.
Make a motion to accept the one from the building commissioner as well.
I'll second that. I'm, I'm sorry, I need a second from the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna read J. Corey's memo briefly, Attorney Vaughn, if you'll bear with me just for a second. Uh, the engineering department has reviewed an interim parking monitoring study dated July twenty twenty-four, prepared for Edens project. Just so everyone's aware, as part of the special permit that was issued to Edens, they were required to do a second um, traffic study once they were at eighty percent capacity. So that's what the reference in J. Corey's memo is to that study. The study indicates there is sufficient parking within the complex, however, it is not always convenient to the location that a customer is looking for. The two graphics appended herein show the percentage of occupied parking during that peak weekday, seven P M. period, and the peak Saturday afternoon, three P M. peak period. The peak evening hour is compelling in that the areas adjoining the restaurants are near at capacity, while the Avalon facility has more than sufficient capacity. Similarly, the Saturday peak afternoon period is near capacity for the retail areas, while the Avalon facility is less than half full. The study makes a theory of recommendations to improve tra- traffic circulations and parking conditions, all of which are deemed to be improvements over the existing situation. I trust the foregoing information, it's sufficient, so on and so forth. So basically, J. Corey, uh, I'd asked him to take a look at the plan that we're gonna see tonight, and clearly he has given it his um, uh, overview and approval. So if there's no other questions to get started, if I've provided, hopefully I've provided enough context to the city council to move forward and look at these plans, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Attorney Vaughn, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all this evening. And for the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Reemer Rothstein, representing Edens, Ryan Riem, who's the vice president of development for Edens for here, and Emily Anderson, the civil engineer with Bullock, Bullock, the engineering department. So, a very great intro, darling, in terms of what we're here upon, and I think you captured it very well, but uh, and I think that was borne out by this traffic study, uh, or the parking monitoring study that was submitted, is that um, the, the, the challenge out at the, the site on occasion is that uh, everyone wants to park close to where the restaurants are. Uh, but there is ample parking that is available, particularly on the area where Chase Bank is, out in that corner at Commerce Way and Mishwam. So, um, I think the, the report indicated that at all times, there's um, you know, probably a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty parking spaces that are available, and predominantly in that corner of the site where people are, are less apt to park, uh, because, you know, look, I think it's just human nature, everyone wants to get as close as they possibly can to the entrance and where they're ultimately going to go. I don't think that's unique to Woburn Village, um, I think Burlington Mall or any of these uh, retail locations, Market Street, Lenfield, I think it's, it's very similar. So, what we're looking to be able to do, and I, I hope that you all have copy of the material that was submitted, is to be able to provide some pedestrian enhancements and just make it for a more attractive and um, um, open uh, connection so that we can provide better pedestrian connectivity from that section of the parking lot, where parking is always available, so that people might be more apt to park there, uh, and be able to have a much more pleasant uh, walking experience if they walk over from that area to the more, you know, higher frequented restaurants such as Surf and Tavern in the Square, Dave's Hot Chicken and everything that's over there. So, um, the, the plan that was submitted, and again, we filed it as a minor plan amendment consistent with the, the forty-yard zoning, but is to provide about two hundred and eighty feet of, of sidewalk area that would be located over in that area where uh, Chase Bank and Cidova would just could provide a more inviting pedestrian experience with some landscaping in that area as well, that would promote and prompt people to be more comfortable parking over there and, and walking over. Um, we did also show, as part of the materials that were submitted, some kind of uh, fun and um, just engaging type street art that might be placed on that sidewalk and crosswalk. The, the intent here is to uh, and I, I don't think the color pattern is gonna be as uh, dramatic as, as what's shown on this, but this was used elsewhere in the center that I think Ryan and his team are familiar with, and it seems to work quite well. Basically, you know, what we're envisioning is you have something on the sidewalk that said, you know, Tavern in the Square, Surf, um, you know, three-minute walk from here, something like that, so that people understand that it might be fun with a family to be able to see it and say, oh, kids, it's three minutes, here we go, you know, so it's something that uh, could promote, you know, just a little bit of interest and something that's uh, fun and um, decorative for the, for the area. So, um, that's really what we're um, you know, seeking the council's approval for, for the, the minor plan change. Um, you know, we do think that it would make a significant improvement for the site, a significant difference, I think as the council is aware. Um, separately, in the, in the months to come, there are gonna be additional parking spaces that would be made available from the daycare.
Fifty-two.
Project, which um, actually, there's about fifty parking spaces, I think they would be available for uh, weeknights as well as weekend uh, activity when, when the daycare's not in operation. So, um, not getting into that, cause part of this application that's separate, but I think this and, and that in the future, I think it uh, certainly would be a, a significant enhancement for the, for the center. So, um, but happy to answer any questions or address any comments you might.
And I'm definitely gonna open it up for questions and comments from the council, but I, I would like to say, you know, when we were first looking at this a year and a half ago, um, um, President Concanon, now Mayor Concanon, um, you know, that the whole sidewalk um, conversation was always at part of the conversation, but what, what wasn't part of the conversation, and signage was, but what wasn't part of the conversation is this idea that was brought forth to us tonight. Um, and, and I had an opportunity to see this a few weeks ago. Um, and I, I thought, you know, again, the colors and all that would have to be determined, but at the end of the day, I really thought it was very interesting because when people see signs, if there's too many signs, they stop seeing signs, we all know that. But this is something that will engage people and could be fun for families and um, and hopefully, I, I think it will, the, the goal is not to have people circling, right? That, that's what's causing the, the issues with people saying, I'm gonna just keep doing this, circling until I find that spot. Um, so I'm gonna be quiet now and open it up for, to the rest of the council. Uh, Councilor Viola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I said, I know people are predetermined that they wanna get a spot always upfront, closest to the draw, closest to where they wanna go. So I will keep an open mind with this. I do think it is in, uh, pretty interesting with, how the painting is with the sidewalk there. So I think that could actually help out a lot, but look forward to hearing a little bit more about this. Thank you.
Councilor Papalata.
So are these sidewalks, are this, there's not sidewalks there, are, are there?
Uh, there are none.
No. So when we're gonna put sidewalks there, is it gonna take parking spots, or is it gonna take part of the roadway? Where is the space coming?
Um, yeah, there's no parking stalls that would be lost from this. There's kind of a, a repositioning of some of the landscaping that's out there. Uh, there's some landscape islands that are in that area where the, the parking, uh, the, the sidewalk and the, and the crosswalks would locate, but we're not talking about uh, removing any parking spaces that are out there.
Okay, so we won't lose parking spaces and we won't lose the width of the streets that are narrow as it is, that, 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 that.
Correct. It's, it'd stay the same width, we wouldn't be.
Closing off any aisles or anything like that, so that's all staying the same. Okay, thank you.
Councilor DeMars.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to have a comment because I feel vindicated, because for years I've been calling out the fact that it really is the fact that people don't wanna park far away and then walk to where they're going. I actually saw a video, um, I was flipping through videos on the internet, and one of the videos was a former traffic engineer and parking engineer. Um, he did a study where, you know, I'll give the example here in Woburn, which fits his example, would be, someone will park eighteen spaces away from Target, go into Target, walk all the way around the store to do their shopping, and back out to their car, and walk farther than it would be from the City Hall parking lot after four thirty P M. to Tremonte. And that's what most people are complaining about, is that there's not that parking available. Looking at this map that you show us where it shows the, the occupied percentage at peak hours, I'd just go right there now, personally. I'll go park over by the Chase and then walk over to Tavern in the Square or Surf, because I'm able to do so. Um, you know, I just think it's one of those things where it's a, it's a societal change, where people are used to just pulling right up to wherever they're going. You know, I grew up where my mom would tell me, no, don't park within the first three rows of a place because you gotta reserve those for the people that might need it to get there, you know, with elderly folks and all that. And that was one of the biggest complaints I always heard when having events downtown. The elderly folks wouldn't come downtown because they wouldn't find a parking spot where they, where they wanted to be. So I think it's more of a societal thing than a problem. I will admit, parking management piece, getting people to park over there rather than circling and creating more traffic and more opportunities for motor vehicle incursions, I guess we'll call them. Um, but yeah, I would be very interested to see any future studies too that would look at the traffic flow, whether there needs to be a stop sign placed somewhere else and so forth, because I know that coming off of Mishwam, there's one of those intersections doesn't have a stop sign, and not many, everybody thinks it's a four-way stop, but it isn't. So that would be one of the, one of the concerns I have generally, but I think it was the.
Is there a formal motion to ask?
Um, no, I'm just throwing it out there because I'll defer to the ward counselor on that, and would would like to hear the petitioner's comments, just because I just think, I know it's probably not there because engineering-wise, you wouldn't want it to queue out on the Mishwam from the light. Uh, but I, you know, it's just, it's kind of chopped up to the point where the traffic, I think, if, if, if people are gonna start parking over in that Mishwam and Commerce Way corner, I think we'll have a lot less queuing going on, uh, rather than circling around. But just some food for thought. Um, I'm, Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we open it up to non-voting members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mark, can I just ask a question? Are the tenants coming to the table at all when having their employees park at the least favorable spaces? Like up at your office, the mall, they have to park on those islands.
Yeah.
Early in the morning to offset the, are the tenants playing ball here?
Yeah, I think there is an employee parking management program in place where they're encouraged to park on the, the, not in the prime spaces right near the front doors, so.
They, they, the employees all today park near Chase today where the parking is available, and also behind um, the stores today, so behind Market Basket, T S W., et cetera. There are about thirty or so parking spaces that, back there that have been designated for employees as well.
Thank you very much. Good point.
Councilor DeMambrano.
Again, the four-way intersection when you come right off Mishwam Road, I've, I've heard a lot of people complain about that. I personally, I drive a full-size pickup truck. So when you come in and you take the right, head to Market Basket, it's kind of a tight, it's a tight little area there. Plus, there's a, I, I guess, you know, you put a boulder there in place, so that obviously people don't drive up and over the lawn and, you know, affect the signage there. But that would be something that, you know, I, I would like to see addressed. I, I, I believe that the uh, daycare that is currently being um, built, um, is adjacent to your property, I believe they authorized you on the weekends to utilize or.
Fifty-two parking spaces.
Fifty-two parking spaces.
After five, Monday through Friday, all day, Saturday and Sunday.
So that, that, that's a help.
We authorize them through the special permit.
Right. So I mean, we, we, that, that is a help down there, cause we, we constantly hear, and you know, you hear it on Facebook and this and that. But I, I agree, uh, my fellow councilors, that, you know, I personally, I'm always out by the Chase Bank, and I, I'm at Market Basket all the time, and I park out there and I just walk up. And, you know, I've always said, you know, it's amazing, somebody will go to a gym and sit on a treadmill for an hour and a half, but yet they'll want that fourth space from the building. And I always thought that, I found that to be funny, but um, I do appreciate the sidewalk and the design and all that, and uh, anything that can make it fun down there, and I appreciate. But if we can look at that intersection, that would be great.
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't think that this is necessarily the end of the, the process in terms of continuing to look at ways to, you know, further make improvements down there as, as they come up in terms of, oh, Jesus, it'd be a great thing to add, you know, that four-way stop.
And one, and one more thing, I know the gentleman said that there's about thirty parking spots in the back of the rear of the building for employees, you know, if, if we can maybe tighten that up and maybe, you know, add a few more back there, that would probably help. Anything we can do um, to add some spots, you know, um, upfront will help not only everyone, you know, but definitely the businesses.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanna take a minute to read um, Commissioner Quinn's uh, comments. Um, let's see. His first comment is that specific site plan with locations not to interfere with any of the ADA ramps or requirements. Um, verify that these are for only businesses on the site, three hundred Mishwam Road. Um, if they do this on, on two ninety Mishwam, Avalon, for instance, then it could be considered a violation of the Woburn zoning. So you're not operating on that property. You know, this doesn't, not, not from what I can see, this doesn't have anything to do with that.
Um, no.
Yeah. But he's, again, suggesting that you verify that, uh, not suggesting, it's, if he's asking, then we shall comply. Uh, that maintenance plan on the upkeep, uh, will include uh, the tenant and the name that goes with it, and that's, you know, when this comes back to the council, Mark, next week, um, there are a couple of additional conditions, that certainly would be one of them, right? So whatever these paintings would look like. Um, and then illumination of the markings. I'm not sure what Commissioner Quinn means by that, but um, I, I assume he means lighting along the sidewalks. Um, and that is a, a very valid point, cause I don't see anything here.
I think that there are, I mean, you wanna see to the lighting, is there new lighting that's being proposed? I, I think there's ample lighting allocated today, is there not?
There is an existing um, part in light, kind of in one of those islands that where the sidewalk is going around, and then there's gonna be some relocated tree uplighting for the trees that are being removed as part of this.
Decorative uplighting.
Decorative uplighting.
I don't see it on the point. And maybe I missed it.
Yeah.
So.
On the set?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so I'm gonna make a note that it's on that set, and then we'll get, we probably have at least one copy of that larger set, yeah. Um, and I'll speak to Commissioner Quinn. In terms of, you know, some of the other things you've heard tonight about the um, you know, that, the, the entrance, you know, I, I, I know that there is another, um, we're supposed to look, in terms of your special permit, we have to look at this again, um, for the, the traffic maintenance, and maybe that's when we take a look at that whole entrance. Um, I don't expect you to reconfigure that whole entrance as part of this, but if you could go back to the team and see if there's anything minor that could be done to, to that um, entrance. Um, I don't, I don't wanna hold, I'm, and I'm gonna ask the council, I don't wanna hold up getting this moving as quickly as possible. Um, I was getting a little antsy waiting the last year and a half for it.
That was just some food for thought on.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No, I appreciate that, and I, and I hope you all will support moving this forward next week. Um, I'm glad the mayor got to see it come to fruition, and um, uh, I'm very excited that, and, and I was getting a little antsy, as you know. You sure you don't wanna take me out of your phone, Mark?
No, no.
Anyway, I really appreciate it, and um, uh, Councilor Viola, did you have another comment?
Just one quick question, Mark. Where the Chase Bank is where we're saying there's uh, a lot more parking that's available there. Any way to put a crosswalk going from that side to the new uh, sidewalk that's going in?
Uh, from sidewalk.
So, not a cross, I'm sorry, I'm saying cross. So, not, a cross, I'm sorry, crosswalk, so where the Chase Bank is, is there an existing sidewalk around Chase Bank?
There is, yeah.
Would it be possible to put a crosswalk going to the new sidewalk?
To the new sidewalk from Chase? Yeah, sure.
Oh, yes, sorry, Councilor Demers.
I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
Is there any other comments? Attorney Vaughn, did you have anything else you wanted to share with the team?
No, I certainly appreciate all of your time and your commitment to the site, and thank you, Mayor, as well for not only your current involvement, but obviously previous involvement, being President of the City Council. I mean, I, we're happy to continue to try to improve things out there and certainly appreciate your understanding of this being a significant enhancement that, you know, we feel is of value, so.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that the request for a minor plan change be sent out to Pence?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll see you next Tuesday, and I'll connect with you before that about a couple of conditions, especially as it relates to Commissioner Quinn, okay?
See you, Mr. President.
Yep.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Attorney Vaughn, and it's nice to see you all faces and send them on Zoom. All right, do I have a motion? No, we have another matter. I apologize. So the last thing on our agenda this evening is Sri Don Raj, did I say that right?
Yep.
For a special permit, hello, sir, come on up, for a special permit under Section 5.129 to allow for a fast food restaurant at 100 Sylvan Road, also known as 300 Trade Center 11410. And just for the record, if you could both give your names, first and last names, so Gordon can record it.
My name is Viti Brana.
Viti.
And my name is Dave Brana.
Dave Brana, and your address, should we use your address of the location here?
Sure.
I'll set with that, Gordon?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so you're here for a special permit. I'm going to, I believe, City Councilor Demambro, this is your ward, I don't know how familiar you are with the requests that are being made, but I'm going to turn it over to you to talk to these lovely folks.
Absolutely. Well, so I was presented all this information, I spoke to Mike Avini from Cummings, I spoke to a building commissioner, Commissioner Quinn. I want you to tell me what you guys, I know there was a Dunkin' Donuts prior to, and they went out of business somewhere around, sometime in '21, 2021, and since then, the space has been vacant, there has been, you know, no occupancy over there. I went by, just to let you know, I took a look at the space, just from the exterior through the glass doors, so I am fully aware and I'm very familiar with the site, the entrances in the front and in the rear and in the building and on and so on and so forth. But I'd like you to tell me what you folks would like to do with that space. Artella.
Thank you so much for having us, first of all, and we really appreciate all of you guys' time. And after your question, we are looking to start a fast food casual restaurant for, especially for Indian food. It's more Indian street foods such as like sandwiches, juices, and we're trying to make it really homey. There is, you know, a large amount of growing Indian population in the area, and we are Indian, it's going to be our family-run business, so we hope to provide and serve a lot of, you know, delicious food, and you guys are always welcome to come board.
Now, there is, you know, this, this, there's this discrepancy, and I've gone over this with Commissioner Quinn, between restaurant and fast food. And it was permitted back in 2008 for the Dunkin' Donuts special permit to allow for fast food, which I would consider Dunkin' Donuts fast food because you go in, you order a donut, a coffee, or a sandwich, and you run the donut, and that's pretty much what that facility was known for. That was a pretty much microwave-type facility with, you know, basically a hand wash station. Again, I was there last week, I looked at what's inside, there's pretty much nothing inside that, that space, just so everybody's aware. There's no hardware in there, there's no ovens, there's no grills, there's no flat tops, there's, there's really nothing in that space. There's countertops and I believe a sink. As for facilities, bathroom facilities, that would be in the common area, that's basically as far as I've gotten to see. So when you say fast food and you say sandwiches, are you going to be doing cold sandwiches? Is there anything that's going to be hot? But we, I don't think you guys are going to be microwaving, so that's why I'm asking the question. How is this going to be prepared?
Yeah, so it's sandwiches that have been, kind of like, we're going to use for the panini presses and whatnot, it's not so much of like, you know, we're going to be cooking, but it's more like warming and then preparing, that type of deal.
Okay.
Yeah.
And another, another thing that was kind of specifically vague, hours of operation. What, what, what are you folks looking for hours of operation?
So we're looking to serve a majority of the corporate offices within the building and around, so we're looking to, to, from nine to five, but, you know, preparations for getting all the food prepared as well as cleaned up, that kind of varies, so that's why we were out awake, and also we are starting this business, you know, for the first time, we don't have a good sense of how much demand there is going to be at, you know, certain peak hours. Let's say after everyone goes home and, you know, there is the college public that comes in like students, they are usually ones to go during the evening time. So we're not looking to stay up until, you know, nine or 10, but we're hoping to do seven to seven, if that is, or if that makes sense.
So you're looking at seven to 7:00 PM. We look at Monday through Friday, we're looking through Monday through Saturday, you're looking seven days a week?
So we want to start with definitely, because as he said, that it would vary for us because we're starting it for the first time, but usually, even though it's in the property where mostly offices are there, but Indian people would come out and eat food, so we are definitely looking for weekends as well. So seven days a week, but again, looking at the demand, we're going to take one day off just to, you know, rest as well as clean and, you know, maintain all the standards.
Okay, so you're kind of looking at maybe a Monday through Saturday, we'll say, and have Sundays off?
Probably Sundays on, but probably either Monday or Tuesday off.
Okay, so being I'm very familiar with that area, that is a very big office building with a courthouse in there as well, there's really not a lot of traffic, there's not a lot of people in that area, it's a ghost town come the weekends, and I mean, it's desolate. I don't even know if maintenance and the cleaners show up. It's pretty, pretty abandoned during the weekend. So that's why, and the only reason why, I want you to succeed, I don't want you, you know, to have all of this and think, I just want you to be aware that, and being you're in the back of the building, there's no signage, it's kind of out of the way, it's, it's not like you guys are right on Sylvan Road, so that's why I'm kind of cautious about the hours of operation. I have no doubt there'd be no mischief or anything like that, and I mean, it's, it's a pretty quiet area over there. That's all I have for now. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions?
Councilor Demers?
Yeah, no, I'm actually, I, when I looked at the floor plan, and knowing that it's, you know, we were wondering whether it was, there going to be a stove, are they going to be cooking or anything like that?
There was a big, big L.
And by, my concerns were belated a lot by you mentioning panini presses, because this is just the Sandwich Express, right? So I have, I have no more objections to that, I was a little, just, we didn't, there wasn't enough discussion about the nitty-gritty of the details before, but this is why we meet in these committee meetings, to hear these details. So I, I think it's a great idea, I'll defer to the Council for the Ward on hours of operation, but maybe, you know, you know, if you were to go with seven to seven, and then you could do a six-month review to change those hours if-
I would, I would definitely consider.
You know, that way we can narrow it down a little bit.
As I think, I think-
But to get you up off the ground on a spot that is empty right now, I have no objections.
And, and I would absolutely say that there are going to be some growing pains here, you're going to have to figure out where the volumes are and how it comes in and out. My other question is, on the weekends, in the mornings, I'm assuming you'd be serving some sort of coffee, pastry, things of that nature, breakfast sandwiches or something to that effect?
Like chai or coffee, so.
The chais and the coffees and stuff like that? Okay. I will also say this, this is a special permit, and I'll make sure it's conditioned strictly for your business. If, you know, for whatever reason, this, you know, whatever doesn't work out, or you should move, that's it, all bets off, it'll stop the moment the business ends, and whoever the next entity is will have to come back in front of us. There's be no, you know, chaining this thing along, and no, there'll be no daisy chains on this. So I'll make a motion that we can send this to City Council for, ought to pass, with the hours of operation, seven to seven, Monday through Sunday for now, with a six-month review in place, so that you will come back to us and we'll review it, we'll see what you guys need, if you guys want to cut it back, but again, it's seven to seven, and that should give you guys enough time during your hours of operation to clean up, and then you can lock it up, okay?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Yeah, so the next step, the city council will meet next Tuesday, and we'll have our formal final vote on it, and then there's a 20-day waiting period until your permit will be issued, because it's an, it's an appeal period, if anyone decides they want to appeal it. So you can come next Tuesday night, probably should if you can, and then it'd be off and running.
Motion adjourned, second.
Aye.
Thank you.